You have one minute before we get started.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out tonight on May 9, 2023, City Council Meeting. We will now have invocation by Mr. Smith, Don Smith, and pledge allegiance by Council Member Boyd.
Let's everybody bow your head, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us the opportunity to have this city council meeting. I pray that you will give wisdom and knowledge to the mayor and the city council so they can carry out their duties and give us, the citizens, the guidance to support and help them as they govern our city. We give this in glory and honor to you, Lord Jesus. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Councilmember Boyd. Approve of agenda, Mayor Protem.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as posted.
Councilmember Boyd?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor approving the agenda? Yes, all opposed? No? Let the record show that Councilmember Adams is not present. The motion carries six to zero. Madam Secretary, PR-23-008, we will have to come back to it. So we'll move on to PR-23-009. Whenever you're ready, Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am. Presentations by Indigav products and REPT Incorporated on solutions to improve engagement with constituents.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Ramey.
Hi, y'all can call me Nob.
Hello, sir. How are you doing?
I'm good. How are y'all?
I'm, we're doing great. Whenever you're ready, you can get started.
Well, I don't know if my screen is showing there. Okay, I can try and bring it up on this little one here. Can you all see this okay?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'd like to first and foremost thank the City of Colleen for giving me this opportunity to take some time out of y'all's council meeting and present a little bit about Indigav and what we do. So I work with cities and counties all over the country, and what we've noticed is that over the past couple of decades, there are more ways than ever for constituents to speak to their elected representatives. There's emails, phone calls, social media. And in today's day and age, one of the challenges I hear from electeds is that they're working real hard to try and keep up with demand for government services and turning things back around to their constituents, but it's getting harder with all these new avenues. So a little bit about what Indigav does is it takes all the different ways that constituents reach out, and it loops it all into one place and makes it real easy for electeds and their staff to, one, look at all the different types of communications that are coming in, and two, turn them around much faster while still hearing what their constituents are saying and understanding what issues matter most to the people of the city. And we do this in a couple of ways. The first is by, like I mentioned, looping in everything into one place and so ensuring nothing gets lost in the shuffle. Two, case management and tracking systems to see different projects and requests route to completion, even when they require different departments or agencies to also work on them. And three, we also grant some tools to help electeds reach out and amplify the message of the good work that they're doing for their constituents. And increasing that reach and being able to survey their residents and hearing more than just the loudest voices in the room. So by routing everything into one place, we do a couple of different things. The first thing is we can clean out all the clutter and spam and enable offices and electeds to get directly to work turning projects around for their constituents. We can also help automate some of the busy work that feeds into the time it takes to turn requests around by being able to sort things out as soon as they come in, such as being able to filter out, like I had mentioned, spam erroneous messages, but also sometimes things like the daily crisis. For example, we are working with another county in Texas that's doing some storm cleanup, and every time a storm rolls into town, they get flooded with messages of people asking where the nearest drop-off site for debris is. Being able to turn that, requesting that question around as soon as it comes in was a huge value add because now constituents can get the answer to their question much faster than before without waiting for someone to go in and need to find out that information for them. This is a matter of technology making their lives easier rather than overcomplicating the process. The final thing we do is we provide publicly available contact data for constituents who have opted in. And what this means is that it's easier than ever for electeds to amplify their messaging and reach out to constituents about things that may matter to them. For example, if there is something like a vaccine site that is opening up in a neighborhood, electeds can now reach out to the folks of that neighborhood and let them know about the resources that are available at their doorstep. Finally, internally, we also provide analytics and reporting for elected offices so they could see what sort of problems they're reaching, getting the most of, so they could apply additional resources to solving those, as well as some other information that they may find interesting, such as the amount of requests that they've turned around or anything else of that nature. Now, I want to also make sure that the good folks at REPT have enough time to do their presentation as well. So I'll pause here and see if there are any questions from either the Colleen City Council or any folks that are listening in.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, do you have any questions? Sir, there are no questions from the council. Do you have anything you would like to add?
No. Thank you all again for your time, and please feel free to reach out if any questions do arise.
All right. Thank you, sir, so kindly. Thank you both. Madam Sec? Oh, yes, sir.
Yes. Hello, City Council of Colleen. My name is Mark Fries. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of REPT. So Nob just presented Indigav and Indigav Solution. I'll jump into showing you what REPT is all about. So let me share my screen really quickly. And just as Nob said, thank you so much for letting us come visit and join your city council meeting. We know you're busy and have a lot of things on the agenda, so letting us be a small part of it, we are very grateful for. So can everybody see in my screen with a REPT title slide?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. So great. So REPT is short for Represented. We are a video Q&amp;A platform for communities and leaders. And the story behind REPT were really a response to a problem that everyone here has felt. That problem is that 71% of U.S. residents believe that officials don't care about the average citizen, and that is very obviously a misperception. Spend any amount of time with any city council person, and you will learn very quickly that they care deeply about the residents and work really hard every day, as you all do, for the community. So this is not so much a fact as much as a misperception, and the real problem is that there's a lack of effective and efficient communication channels between communities and their leaders. That's the real problem here. And myself and my business partner, Mike, who can't join today, we know this firsthand because we used to work at Twitter. We worked at Twitter for 16 years collectively, and Twitter is not a platform that's purpose-built for the kind of community communication that you want to have with your residents. So we said, let's make something that is purpose-built for this kind of conversation. So that led us to build REPT, which again is the first video Q&amp;A platform for communities and leaders. Communities ask, leaders answer. And what REPT does is very simple. REPT helps you connect personally with your residents while saving you time. So that's what we do, and this is what REPT looks like. And I'll walk you through this, don't worry, but one key thing to note is that REPT is not an app. An app requires residents to download something from the App Store and sign up for an account, which is something that most residents simply won't do. REPT is a page. We build custom pages for every city that we work with, and on these pages, residents can visit, and they can, if you kind of follow the numbers in order, one, ask a new question for the city; two, upvote a question from another resident; three, watch short video answers from the city; and four, take additional actions. So this leads to a number of benefits for both residents and for cities, and I'll walk you through both and how they work individually right now. So first, from a resident's perspective, this is how a resident of Colleen, or in this case, Bridgeport, would use REPT. They could come to your city's REPT page. They can post a new question by tapping the blue button in the top left side there. They can type their question in and then submit that way. One note, you can see at the bottom of the middle screenshot, a suggested questions area. If we detect that a resident's question has already been answered, then we will just show them the answer right there. So they kind of get the answer to their question before they even have to ask it and reach out. So it's meant to be automated and very easy to save you time. So residents can ask a new question, or they can upvote an existing question, which you can see on the right-hand side. In this case, Nelson has asked a question, "What's the city doing to improve bus service in town?" And I'm a commuter. I want to know the answer to that question. So I can click the plus ask button that you see on the top right there. And what that does is that attaches my information to Nelson's question. So when the city or when a city official responds with a short video answer, then Nelson, myself, and 88 other people will automatically receive an email that says, "Congratulations, the city has answered your question. Come check out the response on REPT." And this is what, on the left-hand side here, this is what that email looks like. So what this is, it's an automated Q&amp;A platform that makes it really easy for residents regardless of how sophisticated they are with digital tools. We built this for our parents because we know our parents are lovely but are not great with technology, and we want everyone to be able to engage and be involved in this kind of dialogue. So it's a really easy way for residents to ask and upvote questions, and a very easy way for you as city leaders to personally connect with your residents, show them the great work that you're doing, and answer questions before they become phone calls, emails, or tweets into your office, into your inboxes. So the way residents would use this to continue, they would get that email that you see on the left-hand side. They could tap to watch the actual answer to their question, and every video that the city officials record is stored on your city's website, on your REPT site, that is. So residents can watch other answers to other residents' questions, get up to speed on what's happening in the community and all the great work that you're doing, and they can also share those updates with each other very easily. So getting residents sharing all the great work that you're doing peer-to-peer and together. So REPT is very easy to use and very useful for residents, but it's also very valuable for cities and for city officials. So the first thing that we do for cities is we help you track your residents' interests. So every piece of data, every interaction, from trending categories to trending videos to what questions are people curious about, we basically can show you at any given moment what your residents care about and why in ways that you can use to inform your communications outreach and how you engage with residents in Colleen. So we track those interests for you and can show you what those are. We also help you keep trolls out. So Mike and I battled trolls for 15 years at Twitter. You can make a Lord of the Rings film out of the number of troll battles that Mike and I fought and won on the front lines at Twitter. So we designed REPT to be completely troll-proof. When a resident submits a question, it can be reviewed first by city staff before it's actually approved and seen publicly by other residents. So what this means is anything with threats of violence, obscene language, things that just don't belong as part of the public conversation and are not protected by the First Amendment, those will never be a part of the REPT conversation. You can keep the discourse civil and informative just the way it should be and in a way that social media currently does not allow. Social media has done a very poor, notoriously bad job of protecting cities from trolls. So we keep those trolls out. And lastly, when city officials do want to record short video answers, we make it very easy to do so in minutes or even seconds with a number of tools. The one you can see on the right-hand side is what we call teleprompter mode, where you can overlay your notes or a script as you record your video. Those notes will scroll up like a teleprompter, imagine almost like you're a newscaster, and you can record your video with all your notes there, stay on message, make sure you don't miss any key points, and most importantly, record that answer on one take instead of 10 takes because we all know you're very busy. The whole concept here is take 30 seconds, record a video answer, and have us do the rest of the work to ship it automatically to all of your community that has said, "Hey, I really want to know the answer to this question." We do all that work for you. So thus far, we've talked about REPT as a really effective means of personally and reactively and efficiently responding to inbound questions from residents. It's great for that. It's designed for that. But it's also designed for you to proactively share the work that you're doing in your community with your entire community. And the way that we do that is by way of an email newsletter tool that's built into REPT. Basically, every video that you record is stored. On the left-hand side, you can see it in this Answers tab, where you can upload a list of residents of Colleen and then proactively send the video that you just recorded about why the streets are in that shape or why, what the community engagement unit is doing next month. Anything that you just recorded, you can proactively share as a video newsletter in just a matter of minutes. So you would click that send button. Then we built out a newsletter format, which you can see in the central screenshot. You can add in the text that you want to customize it and then send that by email. Boom, within two minutes, you've sent a proactive video about what the city is doing and all the hard work that you're doing that is not always recognized or understood by the community of Colleen. So we want to make it really easy for you to show everyone what you're doing while connecting personally to show them that you do care. So in summary, REPT again helps you connect personally with residents while saving you time. For residents, they can use REPT to ask, upvote, watch, and discover, and cities and city leaders can use it to analyze, answer, and share. So thank you so much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions with the time we have remaining.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? Sir, there are no questions. Thank you and your partner for tuning in and sharing that information with us.
Yes, thank you so much.
Have a good night. Madam Secretary, we're going back to item number one. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. PR-23-008, Fort Hood Redesignation Presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Francisco. Good afternoon, everyone. As you know, today was one of the greatest days in our central Texas area. It was the redesignation of the past military installation. The new name is Fort Cavazos. Okay, that's a round of applause, okay? So I am truly, truly excited. I had the opportunity to meet the family last night at a reception and to really, truly learn about their father. And I'm gonna let the Garrison Commander, he will go in more detail and share why this is so significant for our Hispanic population in the city of Colleen and why this is also important in our recruitment efforts for minority African-American women and also Hispanic women. So the big army made a decision, and tonight I wanted to show the community and also Fort Cavazos that we stand behind you and for force. So tonight I will be presenting a proclamation. This is our Garrison Commander, Colonel Foster. We have the Deputy... Come on, Mr. Moore. The Deputy of the Garrison Commander, Ms. Greta. And we also have the Sergeant Major of the Garrison, Garrison Sergeant Major, Sergeant Major Hall. And they will be receiving this proclamation on behalf of the City of Colleen. No, I gotta give the proclamation first. Thank you, sir. You got it. Thank you.
It's the only thing I'm good for.
And he's gonna speak after me, Brett. Thank you so much. So I don't have my glasses. So would you please read this? I could not. They're in my car. So we're gonna get our Communication Director, Janelle Ford.
Whereas Colleen has an extremely close association with the military, and our residents are deeply grateful for our relationship with our neighboring military base. And whereas Camp Hood was established in 1942 and the decision to make it a permanent military base in 1950 helped spur the economic development of Colleen, but more importantly, helped turn the city, then known as an all-white town, into a diverse and prospering community, eventually accepting citizens of all races. And whereas General Richard Edward Cavazos was a distinguished and decorated leader of the United States Army, and his exceptional service and dedication to his country have earned him the respect and admiration of all Americans. And whereas General Cavazos was a trailblazer in the military, becoming the first Hispanic four-star general in the United States Army and paving the way for future generations of Hispanic soldiers and leaders. And whereas General Cavazos received two distinguished service crosses, two Silver Stars, a distinguished flying cross, five Bronze Stars, and the Purple Heart. And whereas redesignating Fort Hood to Fort Cavazos recognizes his service, recognizes the growing diversity and bravery of the men and women serving at this installation, and gives us a military post that Colleen could continue to be proud of and be proud to have as a neighbor. Now, therefore... Oh, sorry.
Now, therefore, I, Debbie Nash King, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Colleen, do hereby proclaim, May 9, 2023, as Fort Cavazos Day. Thank you for standing up. Yes. This is indeed an honor, and if anyone deserved it, it was him. So I'm going to present this and take a picture, and following me, we will hear from the Garrison Commander, Colonel Foster.
So some great words there, but I think it's important to understand that General Cavazos, his legacy in today's event, I hesitate to call it a transition, although it is, to an extent. It's a new page, but it's a new page in the same long-stored history of this great central Texas community. The Undersecretary of the Army, the Honorable Camarillo, was here today, and he spoke about this great community, Colleen specifically, in his remarks. This redesignation, the name of Cavazos, serves to remind everyone on our installation on a daily basis of what we should all strive to be. That we're always striving for improvement, improving the quality of lives, of the life for our soldiers and the military families that work and reside, not just on Fort Cavazos, but the 75% of which live out here, outside the gates of the installation, in your community. They're your neighbors. They're your friends. Their kids go to school with your kids. And that's why this is a single community. That's why today, getting, receiving this proclamation is so special because it is representative of the fantastic relationship and support that we get from right here in central Texas. It's second to none. General Cavazos represents the best in what we should strive to be as soldiers and as human beings, really. His family has a lot of great accomplishments that go beyond his as well. So, but I'll talk a little bit about his. I mean, you've already heard some of those. Commanding General of the Third Armored Corps, right here at the great place. So this isn't some abstract figure from history that we just admire. This is one of us, someone who served here and whose roots and whose legacy lives on today. He was a key member in founding what we used to call the Battle Command Training Program, now called the Mission Command Training Program, but it's the same thing. He helped look at the Army and say, you know, we have all these great programs to train brigade commanders, colonels, and below, but we don't have a thing to train our generals. Do generals just pop out of the ground and know everything? The answer is no. They don't. They required some mentorship and training, too. And because of General Cavazos, after he took the uniform off, he continued to give to his country in this way. This is one of his major legacies. He helped stand that program up, and just a few weeks ago, we completed what we call Warfighter Exercise right here on Fort Cavazos that involved the Third Armored Corps, divisions from across the Corps, from everywhere, from Fort Bliss to Fort Carson and other locations, and our NATO allies as well. And the program that ran that exercise is the same program that General Cavazos helped found after his retirement. So his legacy is here today. He's one of us. He's a native Texan, you know, born and raised in South Texas, graduate of what would become Texas Tech University. And just a fantastic individual. And I can't think of anyone more fitting to be the namesake, not just of the greatest military installation that the world has to offer, but to be a key representative of the greatest community that our country and our world has to offer, and that's right here in central Texas, to include prominently the great city of Colleen. So thank you on behalf of the Command Sergeant Major, Ms. Bucelato, my deputy, and the entire Fort Cavazos team. Thank you for being who you are. Thank you for being great Americans. And there's no place better to serve in uniform than right here in central Texas. Thank you very much.
And one thing that Colonel Foster left out, he also was the Three Corps Commander. So that was very significant today, and the Mayor Protem agrees. It's really good to see that we're moving forward together. Inclusiveness is so important. With that being said, citizen petitions. Madam Secretary.
CP-23-011, Marcella Cook, adopting use of parking mobility app.
Good evening, Ms. Cook.
Good evening, everyone.
You have four minutes.
Okay. I wanted to bring before City Council, for your consideration, the use of the parking mobility app. What it is, is it allows every citizen in the city to, if they download the app, to submit pictures and license plates of people that are wrongfully parking in disability spots. It is a big problem. I've had to park in the back of Walmart and take two spots because all of the disability spots have been taken by people with no placard or the placard is expired, et cetera, et cetera. And when you call the police, they come, you know, 30 minutes, an hour late. I didn't have time last week to go into much detail on it, but I absolutely wanted to commend our city manager on the five selections he made for finalists for Chief of Police for Colleen. We had five excellent candidates, and I had the privilege of being able to be part of the public that was there to watch each one of the citizen panel interviews that took place. And while I believe each and every one of those candidates did a great job, I feel very strongly that Chief Lopez outshined and outperformed with some of his answers. A few of the things that I really admired, he came in prepared as he went around town, took notes on what he felt was important, as he talked to different staff members and different citizens, and observed different things across the city. He wasn't afraid to say that, yes, I have made some mistakes in my career, but I have absolutely learned from all of them, and moving forward, they are a tool for me to go forward and not make those same mistakes again. And it takes a lot of self-awareness and shows a lot of leadership to be able to say, yes, I have messed up, and here's what I have been able to evaluate. I did incorrectly, and how I would do it better next time. I also feel that he will be able to build that strong rapport with the rest of our officers, including our two Assistant Chiefs. I think that they will all make a great team. I appreciate that we did have Chief Gearhart, and that he is there to be able to stand hand in hand with him and help introduce him to the city of Colleen. Would like to say Chief Gearhart also did a great job during that interviewing process. So, I believe that we've made a really good choice on that. I also would like to say, as far as the Bond Advisory Committee, again, I think this is a great idea and something that's definitely needed. I would hope that it would extend beyond just the GO and be able to encompass any future COs that might come forward and get the citizens' input on that before they're put up for a vote. I also feel like this should be more than just a cheerleading committee, but something where they honestly are able to have people that are on both sides of it. If you can get people who disagree coming into that committee to come to a compromise and an agreement, and gets beneficial to the entire city, and you'll be able to see the benefits of that long-term, especially when it does get to the ballot. And finally, maybe this Bond Advisory Committee could also help with some other ideas, such as what happens to the currently existing buildings that are vacated. I know that personally, as a voter, I would be more in favor of a bond, knowing that we were able to get some money back from our existing facilities that would be vacated, and knowing that that money would be able to be put towards front-loading the cost of repaying these bonds, which, long-term, saves the city money and interest. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Price, good evening. You have four minutes.
Mayor, City Council.
Sir.
Nice to see you all again this evening. I know I've been out for quite a while. As I said, I'm not super great at understanding the process that we have here in our city as how all this works between a meeting and a workshop and so forth. So, if I make a mistake, please excuse me. But I had several things, questions with the presentation for the webpage. I was just wondering, we already have an Internet page, so what's the cost for that? Not only that, who's doing the shadow banning or and/or censoring of it, and who determines that? And then how long are, and how is my personal information going to be protected when I call in? How is all that gonna be managed and all that? And who does it? Because it doesn't seem like Twitter is a great place to actually say you come from today with all of their censoring and, you know, if you know about the Twitter files. So, I'm a little concerned with all of that, even though it sounds like a great idea compared to what we got right now. It's very confusing for me. So, that would be a great idea, but I want to know how much it's gonna cost me. Then when I look at RS 76 and 77, I'm opposed to spending any more money. No more spending money. Don't stop raising my taxes, please. That's how I want to say that right there with this. With the senior centers expansion and stuff like that, I get that we need repairs and some upgrading or anything like that, but $7 million is, that's a lot of money. And that means my taxes are gonna go up. And with me being retired, you know, taxes keep going up, that means I don't afford my house anymore. Then if we go down to the appointment of the chief, I think that got squared away on with Mrs. Brown, so I don't have any questions as to how that got chosen. But that's a public hearing, so DS 49, this, the way that it's worded here, I'm in question, does it violate the First Amendment? Or is it what I saw here today and this evening, is that what is to be expected? So, I'm just, I don't understand how, you know, to me, the way that I read this, it seems like it's a violation of the First Amendment. And then the ordinance, the process now is an executive process. Am I not correct, Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry. What was your question?
For the ordinance, for OR 23010, right now, any process mitigation or anything like that is done through the city executive offices? And we're asking it for to be moved over to judicial, to the court. Is that the way I understand this? That was my question, because I don't really understand the way it's worded. It's going to now a judge instead of being operated out of this city ordinance or city ordinance office.
Sir, if you'll allow, thank you, Madam Mayor.
That was my, that was...
The city manager wants to step in and just clarify, but what this is, is just a shifting of responsibilities that are, from the judicial part of our city, the municipal judge, is the shifting of the administrative portion over to him as opposed to being run by the city manager. Well, yeah, as opposed to being...
So, he already has the power. We're just consolidating the administration of that power.
At this time, he's merely the municipal judge. So, that's the only function that he presides over, the courtroom. But the staff and the administrative portion of his department is the shifting of that portion over to his responsibility.
Okay. So, we're not mitigating the power of the city ordinances over to the judicial, you know, just through him?
No. It doesn't have anything to do with...
So, the city's still gonna maintain going and doing all the violations out there and everything?
Yes, sir.
Not his specific office?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that was it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary, consent agenda items.
RS 23075, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a letter of agreement for the transfer station tipping floor fire repair with American Restore Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $80,412. RS 23076, consider a memorandum resolution awarding bid number 23-27, Colleen Community Center and Senior Center Expansion and Renovation to HCS Incorporated in the amount of $7,416,835. RS 23077, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a professional services agreement for the engineering construction observation services of the Colleen Community Center and Senior Center Renovation and Edition Project with MRB Group PC in the amount of $121,500. RS 23078, consider a memorandum resolution approving the appointment of a chief of police.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Councilmember board.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Madam Secretary.
RS 23080, consider a memorandum resolution appointing members to the Bond Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Cagle.
Mayor and Council, I have five names tonight. If you'd like me to read those off and the council member that recommended appointment. So, the Mayor, Jimmy Towers, Mayor Protem, Tyrone McLaurin, District One, Gregory Moore, District Four, Broccoli Moore, at-large, three, Matt Yow. And we still, so we still have two, three, and one, plus one additional appointment by the whole City Council.
District Two, when we swear in the new council member, he can appoint to that council as a whole. Do y'all want to submit names now, or do you want to email them in, and we decide as a whole out of that group who we would like to be that extra person? Mayor, Councilwoman Cobb, I apologize.
Mayor, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, I move that we send an email with those suggestions on it.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Protem.
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Councilwoman Cobb and Mayor Protem for your support on that. Madam Secretary.
Public hearings. PH 23029, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance re-adopting the youth curfew, second of two public hearings. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance re-adopting a curfew for persons under 17 years of age to prohibit there being any public place from 11:00 PM on any Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday until 6:00 AM the following day, and from 12:01 AM until 6:00 AM on any Friday or Saturday, or on any day from June 1st through August 15th, providing definitions, providing enforcement procedures, providing penal ties consisting of a fine for minors not to exceed 500, and for parents of minors consisting of a fine not less than 50, but not to exceed 500. Adopting certain defenses, repealing all ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Assistant Chief Gearhart, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, how are you all doing?
Fine, and you, sir?
I'm doing well. Thank you. As you know, this is the second public hearing on this ordinance of our three-year review of the, the three-year sunset review of the ordinance. Today would be the day that the council, if the council elects to do so, to take action on this ordinance. If the council elects not to take action on this ordinance, it will expire on the 12th, which is this Friday.
Yes, sir.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council before I go into public hearing? Thank you, sir. Public hearing is open. Mr. Fernino, good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Good evening. Not having children myself, I really hadn't considered this discussion item or public hearing item until I saw the paper yesterday with the tragic incident where a 15-year-old lost his life in circumstances that probably should never have happened. I would just add a suggestion to this. I mean, I see the merits to a curfew, but where there seems to be this problem and disconnect between city police and the school police, when I was growing up, and I'd probably say that just about any of us, when we were 15, on Monday at 10:00 AM, we'd all pretty much be expected to be one place, and that would be school, unless it was a holiday. Maybe in future, I'm not sure how to suggest this, as a constructive follow-on to any sort of a curfew, but maybe make it during the daytime penalties as well. I mean, if your child is not in school or not firmly accounted for, I mean, that, again, I don't know exactly how to forward that as a suggestion, whether it be an amendment or in the spirit of the ordinance as it stands, but I would just say that, you know, something's gotta be done. I mean, a 15-year-old, 10:00 AM at Monday, I mean, I don't know, I really don't care about any of the other particulars of that tragedy that happened yesterday, but the thing that stuck out in my mind and several of my neighbors' mind, Monday, 10:00 AM, why isn't a 15-year-old in school or under some sort of positive control or supervision or whatever words we want to use for that? I mean, that just should not have happened. I mean, there needs to be some, some come together to where we're not having at-risk youth, especially the youth, in circumstances that they shouldn't be in, whether their parents know about it or not. That's as constructive as I can get for that. I mean, maybe explore that down the road.
Thank you, sir. KISD do have a truancy officer. And so, if, when they do attendance, if someone is missing, they do notify their parents. They have a process that they do go by. And as far as the City of Colleen, I guess the new incoming chief could talk to KISD Police Chief and see in which way we can assist with that.
I understand that, Mayor. It just, that goes to the point of my question, where I know the KISD has...
And I'm not saying that our police, current police chief is not working with KISD. I'm not aware of that, but that's an option.
I just present it as a constructive suggestion to all this.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, too, like you, I kind of noticed the same thing. I think it says that falls under truancy. With truancy, if, if the mayor will allow, I, just to clarify on, you know, what takes place as far as when that happens, if there is truly a violation of a truancy, what takes place, maybe, if you'll allow the police chief to kind of stand on that.
Chief Campbell. Sir, Chief Campbell's coming up to see. And good evening, Chief Campbell.
Good evening, everyone. How are y'all?
Fine. And you, sir?
Great. So, just clarify a question again, sir.
I think the gentleman is asking, what do we do as a city with young people who should be in school during the day? Is there anything that the city does currently? Do we play a part in the truancy enforcement?
Sure. The insurance enforcement falls squarely under KISD realm. Now, we assist them when needed, so, and, you know, without getting to a lot of particulars of this case, for you to be truant, you have to be enrolled. So, you have to be part of the system. And I won't speak to a lot of particulars, but if you're not part of the system, you can't be accounted for. So, that goes to talking to some other socioeconomics that really that we don't have any part of, but to be accounted for, you have to be in the system. So, but yes, when KISD needs help, we routinely find children that, during school hours that are supposed to be in school, and then we'll contact the KISD. KISD will contact administrator, administrator contact the parent. That's how it works in a, generally, and when you're in the system. But if you're outside of that system, for whatever place, you're not enrolled, you just don't go anymore, or there's, you know, maybe some social services things are involved, then truancy, they don't fall into umbrella of truancy that truancy officer.
Thank you, Chief. And I don't want to get too far off of general...
Chief Kimball. Sir, Chief Kimball's coming up to see. And good evening, Chief Kimball.
Good evening, everyone. How are you all?
Fine, and you, sir?
Great. So, just clarify a question against her.
I, I think the gentleman is asking, what do we do as a city with, with young people who should be in school during the day? Is there anything that the city does currently? Do we play a part in the truancy enforcement?
Sure. The truancy enforcement falls squarely under KISD realm. Now, we assist them when needed, so, and, you know, without getting to a lot of particulars of this case, for you to be truant, you have to be enrolled. So, so, so you have to be part of the system. And I won't speak to a lot of particulars, but if you're not part of the system, you can't be accounted for. So, that's, that, that goes to talking to some other socio-economics that really that we don't have any, 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 any part of, but to be accounted for, you have to be in the system. So, but yes, when KISD needs help, we routinely find children that, that during school hours that are supposed to be in school, and then we'll contact the KISD. KISD will contact administrator, administrator contact the parent. That's how it works in a, generally, and when, when you're in the system. But if you're outside of that system for whatever place, you're not enrolled, you, you just don't go anymore, or there's, you know, maybe some social services things are involved, then truancy, they don't fall into umbrella of truancy that truancy officer.
Thank you, Chief. And I don't want to get too far off Virginia because we're not talking about truancy here, but to speak to the gentleman's point, I, I think that clarifies. Maybe we bring something back later to talk about that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And also, the system means enrolled in school.
Yeah. That system, the enrolled system, sometimes CPS is involved. There's sometime some other umbrella that's outside of KISD realm where that person is not accounted for by KISD.
Yes. Thank you, Chief.
All right.
And I apologize, City Attorney. All right. Melissa Brown. Good evening. You have, oh, I'm sorry. Please stand by. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Cobb, I'm sorry. Gonzalez, and then you, Councilwoman Cobb.
The, the question hasn't been answered, but I also wanted it to be known that when a student has missed like so many days, fifteen, ten to fifteen days if I'm not mistaken, that truancy liaison has that record. And there's a record that's not only sent to the parent, but the truancy officer does come and speak with the parent in reference to it and to see what's going on. Or if the parent knows, because sometimes the student can just figure second period is just a period to go home and sleep. And because, and they go, and they go, and they go to sleep, and truancy officer call you. So, there is a stipulation in ISS that goes along with it.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Cobb. We have to stay on the agenda item.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is curfew. I apologize. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
So, for Chief, maybe for Chief Kimball, the, I, I understand the question to be regarding curfew. Is there a daytime parameter that could be added to this outside of, not, not associated with truancy, but is there a daytime parameter? This covers nighttime. Is there a daytime option for children under seventeen?
Good afternoon again. In our current ordinance, there is no daytime parameter. If that would to become an option as part of the ordinance, that, that's just something that we operationally would have to try to work in. There are a lot of reasons why children would be out during the daytime. So, operationally, that's just something that we would just have to try to work our way through along with KISD. So, there, there would be challenges in the daytime curfew.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Kimball. That is all. Thank you. Melissa Brown, you have, good evening. You have four minutes.
Going to kind of go the opposite direction if where the discussion is just going. First is that I've mentioned a couple of weeks ago, I'll mention it again, Prop A was put in place to keep young people from having criminal records. As written, our current curfew ordinance would give juveniles, minors specifically, a criminal record. It's a classy misdemeanor. So, while it carries about the same weight as a speeding ticket, a parking ticket, anything like that, it's still there. When you're sixteen years old and you're trying to get a job, working over the summer, that's something that would show up on your, your background check. So, these are things that we have to consider when we're putting this in place. My recommendation would be that this, instead of being a standalone charge, becomes an enhancement, so that if a young person is out after a curfew and is committing another crime, then truancy would be something that could be added on to that. It also gives the police a probable cause reason to stop a minor who is out during curfew hours, to speak with them if they suspect that they've been involved in other criminal activity. It allows them to do that investigation, talk to them without having to give them that charge right away and without finding or penalizing them, parents, or business owners. I also feel like if they're at a place of business where they're supervised, where it's structured, where they're not getting into trouble, we should just take all charges off of those, those, our business owners. We should be supporting businesses that are keeping our youth from being in trouble, not penalizing them for allowing them to be in their location after a certain hour, particularly when you look at winter break and spring break. The ordinance accounts for summer vacation from school, does not account for when they have one, two, or three weeks off throughout the school year. So, if you have spring break in March and you have a youth who's out later because they don't have school the next day, they still get the same penalty they would as if school was in session. I believe the intent for the days and the hours that were there and taking the summer months and extending them to later was because you want to keep our young people rested for school. I think we need to take all of these things into account, though. In regard to the conversation, if, if it wanted to be perhaps, it could say that during school hours, a minor could be found in the same situations for violation of curfew, and just extend and put in those hours when school would be in session. And again, have that only be if it's in the commission of another crime. Maybe it would help keep our, our youth safer. I do think we need to have something to discourage kids from being out at one o'clock in the morning in the parks when it's highly dangerous for them, but I don't think they need a criminal record if they're not causing trouble. Thank you.
Assistant Chief Gerhart or Chief Kimball, will one of you please answer why in this ordinance the, the hours are set in that manner? Thank you, Chief, for coming back.
No problem. Can you repeat that for me just so?
And the hours that we have in the ordinance, and also if they break it, there is a fine. And will they, how long will it stay on their records if it will be put on their records? Could you please elaborate on the decision process on this ordinance?
Just to give a little bit of background, I mean, it's, it's, it's an ordinance. It's, it's not a crime. And the penalty goes to the parents. So, for a youth to be out after the hours that was set by ordinance is, one, we are making the, the child safe, all right? And then, secondly, the, the citation or the, the charge, the, the ordinance violations to the parents. So, the hours taken in consideration, one, for, for working, school activities, religious affairs, things like that, so children who are under the age can participate in those without, without fear of, you know, being stopped by the police, or at least have an explanation. So, again, I think when you, when the ordinance was made, or years ago when the ordinance was, was constructed, that, that the hours were, one, taken in for the safety of the child, and one, that, that their lives were not so prohibited against normal affairs. So, and, you know, it's not our job as police to try to parent the children, but have a framework where they could stay safe. I just think, and I tell people all the time, I don't think you want me to parent your children for me. My, my level of discipline is a little bit different. What happens in a Kimball household than what might happen in other households. So, but our job is not to parent them, but so children can operate within a framework, and then we, then there's some penalty to the parents if they knowingly let that child, or they, they can't, they can't discipline their child or have control of their children, then the parents need to explain that in an ordinance, you know, to a judicial official.
Thank you, Chief Kimball.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions from Chief Kimball? Thank you, sir.
All right.
Public hearing is closed. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Segura.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve PH 23-029.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve. I do have a comment, though, about the citizens' concerns on this. From what I can see on here, and they bring up some very good, interesting points on a curfew. As having two sons that grew up here in a clean area, I am very concerned about, you know, activities that take place outside of normal business hours and whatnot. And I would like to have my kid protected as well as protect, make, make sure he, both, both are doing the right thing. From what I can see here, though, I think that if we don't have the penalties that are written in the ordinance as they are, there are no teeth to what we're doing. So, if you have a curfew and you have no consequence, or you have no, you know, repercussion to having a curfew, I think that you'll just run into a situation where people will just ignore it. And then, the second thing I would like to say is that I, I do think that without having to specify the spring break or the winter hours, that we can give the police officer the discretion. In many ways, I, I think a lot of the ordinances that we have on our books right now, the police officer already has discretion to, to, to make a common sense judgment on whether or not that kid should be out or not. I see Chief Gerhart in the back shaking his head, yes, so I, I confirms that. So, with that, I do second Councilmember Segura's motion.
Thank you, sir. With so much going on in the world today, I commend the Police Department and Chief and Assistant Chief Gerhart and your staff for putting this ordinance in place to protect our children from harm. So, all in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Council, oh, Councilmember Board stepped out, so the motion carries five to zero. Madam Secretary.
PH 23032, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Westwood Professional Services on behalf of McLean Commercial LTD Case Number Z 23-11 to rezone approximately 21.16 acres out of the William H. Cole survey, abstract number 200, from A, agricultural district, to B2, local retail district, with a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow for a battery storage site as a permitted use. This property is locally addressed as 8390 Featherline Road, McLean, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of McLean by changing the zoning of the property being approximately 21.16 acres out of the William H. Cole survey, abstract number 200, from A, agricultural district, to B2, local retail district, with a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow for a battery storage site as a permitted use, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mr. Rebell presented this last week. Would you like for him to present it again? Thank you. We will now open up our public hearing. Ma'am, if I mispronounced your name, please forgive me. Trantra? Yes, ma'am. I didn't know if that was a H or an M. Come on up, please. Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Thank you. I just found out about this a little while ago, so I'm really kind of unprepared. But it was brought to my attention that the battery storage site is going to be lithium batteries. Is that correct? I don't want to assume, but it doesn't say. Lithium batteries, okay. From my, from my understanding, also, lithium batteries are a hazardous material. I, I'm not sure if you all are aware of that or not. And it's also going to be sitting in between two residential neighborhoods, Purview Estates and Yow Ranch, and also directly across from the Police Department. And I was wondering, why is it going to be in the middle of the, those neighborhoods? To me, when it's a hazardous material, I think, I go back and think about West Texas, how that plant was hazardous and it exploded. So, I, I was wondering, how are we going to keep it from off-gassing and exploding in the middle of that neighborhood? I would hope that someone would reconsider that because it is dangerous and it is hazardous materials. So.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And when everyone speak, I'm going to have Mr. Rebell to come up and answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, you want to speak? Okay, thank you. Melissa Brown, you have four minutes.
Lots to say. Thank you, sir. I will, though. Understanding that the comprehensive plan and the flume are living documents, this is in a controlled growth area, and it is near houses. Test show that small lithium-ion batteries fully engulf a house and blow out windows in fifteen seconds. For reference, a traditional fire takes three minutes to fully engulf a room. In September of 2022, a battery pack fire in Monterey County, California locked down Route 1 with a shelter-in-place order for everyone who lived within three miles of that battery storage area. April of 2019 in Surprise, Arizona, eight firefighters were injured as a result of a battery storage fire. A report says that that was an extensive cascading thermal runaway event. Also in April of 2019 in Peoria, Arizona, two fire captains were severely injured and put in ICU. In January 2023 in Morton, Illinois, they denied a system. Their fire chief said, and I am paraphrasing here, "It is not a five-mile island concern, but there is definitely concerns." Virginia and Massachusetts have repeated multiple storage locations for safety concerns. And in another one of the California fires, residents were on a shelter-in-place for up to twelve hours with their windows closed and ventilation systems off, meaning no air conditioning. Europe, Australia, South Korea are all looking, taking these same storage facilities offline because of safety concerns. FEMA research shows that there are still many questions about the toxicity of the battery vent gas, and that the utilities and commercial entities that own large battery storage are unfamiliar with the extent of the potential fire hazards. One of the fires in California started because of a faulty fire suppression system where a false alarm went off, causing water to be put onto the batteries, which is actually what caused the fire to start, then causing more water to be put on those same batteries, causing the fire to grow. Our firefighters may be trained on disabling the battery containers in case of a fire, but as competent as they are, they are not electricians. This is the responsibility and liability and the risk that should be on the developer, not on any single employee of the City of McLean or on the City of McLean itself. I would hate to think what would happen to the city if something went bad, and we have two housing units that are on either side of the road of this. One where fence lines will back up almost to the screening on it, the other one directly across the street. There is no way to eliminate the risk of battery fires. The focus has simply been on preventing as many as possible and limiting the damage when a fire happens. We would not be getting all of the, the power back out of these. It will go out into the grid, which means Austin, the Mud, Round Rock, Georgetown, Cove, whoever else is on the same grid as us, would be benefiting from this electricity storage. We are going to be taking all of the risk and getting minimal reward for it. If this is approved, the developer should be required to carry insurance, it will pay for hotels, moving costs in new homes, any medical issues that arise as a result of long-term hazards that we don't yet know of, or an emergency situation. What we don't want to have is have a crisis like happened in Palestine, Ohio, and then the city is on the hook for it, or the residents are on the hook for it, people are in danger, and there is nothing in place that we require the developer who's putting our citizens at risk to cover this. In short, I would encourage the council to say no to this. Let it go out into a rural area where there aren't any housing, or go to the areas where they're going to get the most benefit of it. Let Austin have it.
Chief Kobinski, also, when Mr. Rebell come up, I would like for you to come up also to talk to the residents that's new or haven't heard you speak on this subject, the safety.
Good evening. Four minutes, sir. Yes, ma'am. I'm also opposed to battery storage. If you know anything about lithium batteries in the Army, they like to vent very easily, and they're easily destructed, and they cause severe bodily injury, right? Not only that, they explode. It's like an artillery round going off. It's not, if you've seen any of the EV cars on the highway catch fire, and then they're let to burn because there's no other way to mitigate them other than sand, they explode. This particular area has a lot of different civilian homes out there, but it also has Shepperill High School. Shepperell High School. And you're wanting to put it within, within a half a mile of that high school. If you like breathing in toxic gases that you can't see or can see, then I suggest that you put this there. That's a great place for it, right across from the police station. Go ahead and affect every single police officer in our town, and then, oh, yeah, let's go ahead and just have a riot in town, the same day that we set this thing on fire. It's not a good idea to have any type of battery storage anywhere near critical infrastructure or our children and/or our homes. There's a lot of other mitigating factors to lithium or any other battery storage whatsoever. If you would look up New York in 1890 from all the electric EV taxis in New York and the battery storage, and the disaster that was for the city of New York, you know, I'm just looking at history repeating itself, and I'm saying, it's not a good idea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Fornino. Sir, you have four minutes.
For those of you who don't know, before I was in the United States Army, I served for nine years in the United States Submarine Force. And in addition to living next to a 165-megawatt nuclear reactor, every submarine in the U.S. Fleet comes complete with a battery bank, okay? Prior, all submarines were running off batteries or using their diesel engines to charge up the batteries. But nuclear-powered submarines, in addition, also have a battery bank, which comes up to several hundred cubic feet of battery. And I will give you something to look up. On the 24th of April, 1988 USS Bonefish, the last, one of the last conventional submarines that we had, had a battery fire with the loss of three, three crew members. That's with people living on top of a battery, highly trained, highly skilled, monitoring 24/7, living, eating, working, sleeping, next to a highly hazardous piece of equipment. And now we're talking about 22 acres of something like this? I cannot stress to you, I mean, this is no reflection on Chief Kobinski or anybody else in, in the first responders of Colleen. 22 acres? That's environmental, long-term considerations aside, the immediate and inherent safety risks, I cannot stress enough that this is a bad, bad idea. That's not out of fear, that's out of professional experience, right? From whether you're on a trickle charge, a trickle discharge, a full discharge, or a full charge, ventilation, temperature, specific gravities of the battery, possible shorts, moisture, there are so many things that can go wrong with this. And that one incident with USS Bonefish hammered into me as a young sailor. Two years after the incident, when I entered the fleet, I actually, on the first boat that I qualified, we had a survivor from that ship on my crew. And everything that he experienced and detailed with everything that could go wrong did go wrong. And when you consider the fact the U.S. Submarine Force has some of the highest safety records, training, prevention, and everything else, accidents still happen. I mean, that's just from a few cubic, a few hundred cubic feet of battery space. 22 acres, that is a thing of nightmares. When Bonefish caught fire in a matter of five minutes, that, that temperature, that fire reached 1,200 degrees Fahrenheit in minutes. The survivor of that crew that I sailed with on USS Albuquerque detailed to me that when you consider a submarine, conventional powered or nuclear powered, it doesn't matter, two-thirds of that hull is still underwater. When they evacuated the ship, they saw their hull still glowing red. That's dipped in the entire ocean, right? That's how fast, how hot that fire got. That is a hazard we don't need. Going off of what Mrs. Brown had to say on something like that, let's put it in a much safer area, not in a residential area. The hazards that come along with this, just in concept, I can't even, I can't even begin to detail in four minutes. So I said, I have specific professional training and experience with this sort of thing. If you have questions, please, it's not out of spite that I'm objecting to this, it is out of genuine, true concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gu Kaeson. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protown, Council. I guess one of the things about being one of the last ones to speak on something is all your thunder is taken from you. And I'm not going to really stand up here and repeat over, just going to hit highlights on this matter. But first, I would like to say that as a member of the P&amp;Z, I did in fact vote for this item, but I have to apologize because I did not do my due diligence in looking into this matter. If I would have, I would have voted difference. Would it made a change? I don't know. But as previous stated regarding the Arizona fire, this California fire, Tesla at one of their locations had a fire in their battery area. I'm going to pull this up real quick, since I don't have a lot of time to talk. Okay? They had a fire in one of their areas that was supposed to be, at the time, one of the safest battery storage places. And the key points taken from that is the Tesla Megapack caught fire at a PG&E energy storage facility in Monterey, California. Okay? Fire caused the road enclosure and shelter-in-place orders for, for the residents. And I think that was one of the questions that this body brought up last week about shelter-in-place. And my understanding, the answer was there would be no need for a shelter-in-place because this stuff burns itself out. A gentleman by the name of Richard Steeman, an air population control officer for the Monterey Bay Area Resources District, said in general, lithium ion battery fires can't emit toxic chemicals and hydrocolic acid. This stuff's going to get in the air, and the, and the wind blows, we don't know which way the wind's going to blow. And now we're going to possibly put the residents in danger because of response time from our fire department, if they're busy. If it's, my understanding, if the engine that's in that particular district or whatever however they break it down is busy, they bring in another one, so that adds time to responding to it. And FEMA has also stated that the dangers of two our first responders, not just the firefighters, but the PD that arrives, the other people that arrive out there when these fires take place. In Santa Fe, New Mexico, in January of '23, the resident took, took out an op in, in the local paper, expressing their fears about a potential battery storage facility near their homes. Two things they, I've already talked about, the risk to the firefighters and other first responders, and there have been example, several examples of off-gases incidents relating to lithium ion batteries. Tesla's an example. Battery fires in Illinois resulted, again, as stated, thousands of residents being, having to be sheltered in place, and also, some of them had to be evacuated. These battery fires releasing numerous of dangerous gases, as already stated, and we don't know how certain gases are going to react to certain people. It might not be a bother for one person, but it could put the other person in the hospital. We don't know. And is that a risk that we want to take? And as mentioned with the FEMA, about different types of gases being released in these fires. So after really looking into it in consideration.
Excuse me, Mr. Gu Kaeson, your time is up. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Chief Kobinski and Mr. Rebell, would you please come to the podium? Mr. Rebell, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
The first question was the location. Why was it selected to go in that area?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, I'm Protown Council and City Manager. I'd like to first state that the applicant is present, so a lot of those questions could be answered by the applicant.
Please, sir.
Mr. Sam Jackson is here.
We're going to invite the applicant.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Apologize, I'm not Sam Jackson, I'm Dan Ditto. Sam Jackson was unable to make it, so I'm here instead.
So you had the opportunity, sir, to hear some of the concerns from the residents. Would you please address the ones that you can, and I have Chief Kobinski from a safety perspective, but you can address that too if you have that information. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. So appreciate the time. I first wanted to just address that this isn't a new concept. This is a concept that's encouraged by the feds. We are putting these batteries, they're not out in, just out in the open where the fumes are, you know, being in, in the public areas, but they're actually in self, these self-containers that are regulated nationally with their own fire suppression monitors, multiple emergency shut-offs. We go through national requirements through FERC to make sure that these containers and all the equipment and safety specs on it are running prior to any energization of the project. So again, it's highly regulated. These batteries aren't just out in the fields for, for, for public to, you know, inhale any fumes. Everything's self-contained, where it's, it's, the safety is, safety, you know, specs on the, on the facilities are, are there that can keep it self-contained, so, yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that. What is the probability of one of them exploding?
So I know there was mentions of the explosion in Arizona, and one of the issues with that was it wasn't clear communication with, with the fire marshal and fire chiefs on that, on that issue. What you do when, if there happens to be a fire, which is unlikely due to all the safety specs on the project, you keep the, keep everything contained. And basically, if you, you wouldn't even spray the container down, you'd let it burn from the inside, keep it self-contained, and then you would haul it off. So the only way that you would have an issue with what happened in Arizona is if you let that open flame be exposed to oxygen, and so you would keep it self-contained, and that wouldn't be an issue. And that's, we've, my associates have had conversations with fire chief about, about this, and we would continue to, you know, give any safety briefings or meetings with them as needed to ensure their, our full cooperation with whatever standards that we need to abide by.
What about chemical vapors in the air? That was another question.
So again, it's, it's all self-contained.
Environmental, yes.
Yes, ma'am. So it's all self-contained with a self-ventilation system, where those vapors from the lithium ion batteries are not just out in the open air.
All right. Thank you for that. Mayor Protown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, sir, for coming out. You used the term self-contained.
Yes, sir.
Is that analogous to, what exactly does that mean? Does that, does that mean that, for one thing, the size of this, the size of this project, is it all self-contained, or each battery self-contained? And when you say self-contained, again, does that mean it's enclosed in something that would not allow it to vent, or allow it to, if in the case of a fire or explosion, cause damage to surrounding area?
Correct. So it's, the battery cells are in reinforced steel containers, and there is ventilations on there to make sure that, you know, it gets, you know, the proper coolant, but that it's also not releasing any toxins or chemicals into the air. So it is, everything is self-contained with all the, you know, fire suppression if things were to get too hot. So that way, you wouldn't have to bring outside, you wouldn't have to open up the containers to expose it to oxygen, which is where you would have the issues. You instead let it be contained in the container, in the reinforced steel containers, burn out, and haul it away.
So burn off the oxygen that is in the container itself? And once that does, the fire dissipates, and you just get rid of it at that point?
Correct.
Okay? And with that, again, the size of each battery, you know, it was made, you know, the size, the acreage, we're not talk, are we talking about a linked battery chain, or is it individual batteries? And if it's individual batteries, how many and how big are each individual battery?
So there was an updated site plan sent over to the council members, and it shows, you know, I'd say, I, I don't have the exact number of containers, but it's not 22 acres of batteries. Really, it's only about five or six acres. So there is additional acreage there, that was just a part of our agreement with the landowner. But each, there's a certain number of battery cells inside each container in that, on that five to six acres that we would actually be, have the, the containers. And on the site plan, you'll also see the proximity to the residences in any homes or neighborhoods across Featherline or to the Southwest. And, you know, we're doing many projects, and there's also examples of a lot of other projects, you know, nationally, in, in states all over the country, where they are a lot closer to much more densely populated areas. So these are, it's, it's not a new concept to have these in somewhat of a close proximity to residences.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with the, the history of it, and I'm aware that there are other, we asked that last week, actually, and got a good answer on, these are not new. There are other ones available, or other ones in the, why this area? Again, is it because the transformers that are located there, it needs to be close to that? Is that the reason is there?
Yeah, so these are very site-specific projects. We have analytics team members that will actually, that actually study, study the grid and see where there's areas of congestion, where, you know, there's not enough transmission infrastructure in place to carry this electricity to other places that it's needed. So you have a lot of power coming into one area, and that has to do with a lot of renewables that are coming online in the immediate area. So in order to, you know, not strain existing infrastructure, but also to not waste that power that is coming in, rather than letting it just dissipate, you're going to store it, and this just was a, kind of a heat spot on the transmission and grid infrastructure map, showing that this is where a battery of this size is needed and, and helpful.
Okay, and if, one last thing I would ask that, if we could put the site plan up so that citizens can see what you're talking about, the size, so we're not just conjecture of saying, hey, it's this large, when in fact, it's, it may be something other, if we can get that site plan put up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protown. Councilmember Cigar.
Thank you, Mayor. And last week, I know we had a good presentation, a lot of the concerns that some of these citizens and some of us here had, I know that last week's presentation very, it kind of calmed a lot of those. But one of the things that I want to just kind of reemphasize, because you spoke a little bit about it, it's the fumes. And I know you kind of made mention that if something happens, it's contained, but I think last week's presentation, it was that if there is a fire and there is flames, you know, and, and our fire chief is here, and I think that, he said, if I'm not mistaken, those fumes are not hazardous. It's like, from, if I get this right, I think last week was saying, they pretty much just let it burn out.
Correct.
Is that still the case? Because, you know, it, it doesn't necessarily, if there's a fire, have to be contained in a container, it's not going to stay in there, and I mean, it'll just burn, and the best thing to do is let it burn. But I think most citizens' concern is if there is a fire, you know, are we going to be breathing toxic fumes? And I just want to clarify, last week, I think that, what the, the answer to that was no.
That's correct.
Is that correct, Chief? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so the danger, good evening, Mayor and Council. The danger is when you put water on it, now you start producing acids and things that if you inhale, that can spread over a long distance, depending on wind conditions. The concerns with this, yes, it is, any, any flame is toxic up close and personal. The distance that these, these battery storage units will be from any residence or anybody who could access. or anybody who could access it outside of emergency services personnel who have the self-contained breathing apparatus. The, the fire burns off the toxic gas before it would exit the footprint of the area. So letting it burn actually burns off any toxic gas that could be no different than gasoline or, or any other chemical that's out there that's transported on I-14 through the railway. Just as dangerous chemicals travel through there that if they burn, we want them to burn as opposed to putting water on it. And that's the hazardous materials team's responsibility to make that determination.
All right. And thank you. And, and you know, that's kind of, I think, my biggest concern. And I think that I just wanted to reemphasize, because, yeah, if it burns, worst case, you know, something happens, it's not toxic. You were just going to watch it burn and, and let it go and, but I appreciate that.
And to be clear, it is toxic near the flame.
If you're near the flame.
If you're near the flame.
Well, if it burns, don't go near it. Just let the firemen do their job.
Correct.
And we'll be okay. Thank you.
Chief, since you already up here, I was going to finish with him, since you're already here. Councilmember Board, before I ask my question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Chief.
Evening.
The project contributes to reliability of our local electrical infrastructure. It does complement the existing substation. We were briefed last week that screening and adequate landscaping would be established to protect the character of the area. We also are aware that the site is close proximity to the future constructed fire station, ELC. The applicant talked about redundancies, suppression systems, alarms, all that stuff. They'll be following city and national codes. And the fire department, your department is involved with the, the development of this project. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. This is something that the community would benefit from. It is something that benefits our infrastructure, and I think that's where we should also contribute our focus. Last week, a lot of these questions were asked, and we were thoroughly briefed on the mitigation factors, which I was pleased with. So that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Counselwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. So in District One, recently, we've experienced some rolling brownouts. And I guess that would, this infrastructure would help Encore be able to meet the needs of that and prevent that from happening across the city? Ideally, is that what this is for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Chief Kobinski, our firefighter teams, do we, you mentioned the hazmat teams, but do we have firefighters with hazmat training?
We have approximately 65 firefighters that are currently hazardous materials operations or technician level trained on the fire department.
And do we have some with an emphasis on the ESS or electrical safety specialists?
So our hazardous materials team doesn't take an emphasis on any specific hazard. We are an all hazards department, therefore, we have to specialize in, in all of these things, not just batteries or ESS systems, but chemicals as well.
And then my understanding is that some of the other situations that were mentioned, they were different from the one that is being mentioned to us today, is that they were not self-contained units. Chief, do you feel comfortable in the event that there was, let's just say, worst-case scenario here, that what was mentioned is actually what would play out in the real world potentially?
The main comfort level comes from the fact that Underwriters Laboratory certifies this, this system. They have, and if you know anything about Underwriters Laboratory, they thoroughly test systems and put them through the rigors at a percentage level that's higher than what normal wear and tear is. And these are Underwriters Laboratory certified. With response to Morris, Illinois, that was a battery storage factory that was actually underground and not certified or coded, so nobody knew, not even the city government, knew that there was a battery storage facility in the backyard. It was a clandestine battery storage facility that nobody knew about. That's why there were evacuations there. With regards to Surprise, Arizona, it was 2019, it was emerging technology, and the firefighters were not trained. They did not have communications. Again, my comfort level in the fact that we have been in this from the ground level up and that the company is going to provide the training to us, to not just the hazardous materials teams, but the first responding units, so that all firefighters will understand what their first actions and steps should be until those hazardous materials-trained personnel who can get there can handle the situation.
Thank you.
Any other council member? One last question for you, Chief Kobinski. One of the concerns, or the question I wrote down, is the response time. If something was to go wrong, God forbid, but if so, what would be the response time from the fire department?
So under normal and customary circumstances, Station Four is less than a mile away from this facility. They would be out the door within 90 seconds and on-site within a minute if they were responding from the new station that's being built. The surrounding stations around there, Station Six and Eight and Nine are within six minutes response time, plus their turnout and dispatch. Station Nine being a little further, a little bit more than six minutes. But we would have a full complement of suppression personnel responding and on-scene within less than six minutes, more than 90% of the time.
Thank you. Any more questions of the council? Thank you, Chief. Sir, I have one more question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, the location and around it is grass.
Yep.
And that's your property, because you said you purchased more land. Is it feasible to say, can you just cut all that grass and just make, in case something do happen, I'm not saying it will, that all of that area just clear?
Yes, ma'am. So we could absolutely do that.
And this for the residents? See, it's easy to make a decision because we're the council.
Yeah.
But for peace of mind for the individuals that live in that area, their concern. So any way, if the council do go forward with this, any way that your organization can put every safety precaution, cutting grass and keeping it cut, not just one time, but just making sure if it explodes, it cannot ignite to the grass. Or I know poles out there, and I understand that's their, that's their area, they own it. So I'm just trying to put any safety precautions in place.
Yes, ma'am. And so if you look at the, the site plan here, you'll see on the south side, four foot to Tenja Pond, that'll also, you know, block out any, any, if there was, God forbid, a fire that happened. Also, we are putting the masonry wall around it. But other grass, any other vegetation inside that property, we'd be happily, happy to, you know, cut that and, and make it dirt.
Right. And make, yes, that'd be good. That would be good. So Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, Chief Kobinski. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I did want to address one, one discussion point about explosion. We keep talking the word explosion, and it's being drawn to a similar area of West Texas. First of all, West Texas was a very stable product called fertilizer, and a fertilizer plant that caused that explosion. These batteries do not explode. They have a thermal runaway. They create immense amounts of heat, and they burn fast. But the, the terminology in drawing the, the likelihood of it would explode like West Texas is a complete misnomer. These are not going to explode in that way. Again, it's thermal runaway and not an explosion that's going to level blocks and, and areas. I just wanted to clarify that as well.
Right. And did we ever address the, why it was located in that area? That was the first question that one of the residents asked.
Yes, ma'am. So these are very site-specific projects. The congestion that we mapped out is at this substation right here. And so we, in order to, you know, assist with, with that congestion and the, the grid infrastructure in the area, we needed to tie directly into the substation, Encore's.
Yes, sir. You still have some more questions? I'm not sure which one I get. Mayor Protem.
I just have one final question. Thank you, Madam Mayor. What's the closest other facility that is, that, you know, that does this? Or where, if you can tell me where are some other areas close by or the nearest?
Yeah.
That we have to us.
So specific to Black Mountain in our projects. I wouldn't know exactly other companies and where their locations are, but...
Just a question. So Black Mountain is doing this as a subcontract to Encore, I take it? You're doing this for Encore?
No, sir. We're, Encore is part of the, that's who we're tying into. So that's our, we're actually interconnecting our facility into the substation. So that's how we're going to, we're not generating any power, we're just getting it from Encore.
Let me explain real quick what I'm trying to get a sense of. Is it Colleen is the, is it, are we the only ones being tapped as this? I know there are other facilities. I'm trying to find out where they are in proximity. Do we have other, is it Belton, Copper's Cove? And if so, are they, are they on board with this?
Yeah, so we're, we're doing projects in the DFW area, specifically Wiley, Glen Heights, just south of Dallas. We're doing, we have five different projects in Houston. We have projects close to here. We have a project in Taylor. As you know, there's a lot going on with, in Taylor with the new Samsung facility. I could keep going on and on, but we, we have a lot of projects that are in a lot more densely populated areas than this area of Colleen.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is my final question as well. There was a mention of a masonry wall. I just want to verify that, the height of the wall.
So that's an eight-foot masonry wall that we'd have along Featherline Road, along the north side and along the west side of the property.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That was one of the questions last week. Thank you for asking that question, Councilmember Board. The safety of children being able to get over and to get into trouble. Thank you, sir. All right. Public, thank you, sir. Public hearing is closed. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Mayor Protem.
Madam Mayor, move to approve.
Councilmember Board.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, yes? All opposed, no? Motion carries six to one with Councilwoman Cobb being in opposition. Oh, five to one. I stand corrected. Madam Secretary.
PH 23033. Hold a public hearing and consider a request submitted by Contador Engineering LLC on behalf of Curtis Hemmings, case number Z 23-12, to rezone approximately 1.6 acres out of the Moses T. Martin survey, abstract number 6963, from A agricultural district to AR1 agricultural, single-family residential district to B3 local business district. The subject property is generally located on the west right-of-way of Tremere Road and east right-of-way of Kelly Lane, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of the property being approximately 1.6 acres out of the Moses T. Martin survey, abstract number 963, from A agricultural district and AR1 agricultural, single-family residential district to B3 local business district, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mr. Reva presented this slide deck last week. Would you like him to present it again? Thank you. Yep. Did she say yes? Okay. Would the applicant like to speak before I open up public hearing? Good evening, sir. Would you please state your name for, for the record?
Good evening, Counsel. George Mesa with Contador Engineering. Just here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Counsel? Sir, there's no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown. Public hearing is closed. Counsel, what is your opinion? Councilmember Segar.
Mayor, I move to approve.
Thank you. Councilmember Aberas.
Second that.
Thank you. All in favor, yes? All opposed, no? Five to zero. Let the record show that Mayor Protem took a break. Madam Secretary.
PH 23034. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance on the substantial amendment to annual action plans for program years 2018, 2020, 2021, and 2022 to provide CD, CDBG funding for construction and related costs for the senior center and improvements at the Rosa Hurford Community Center. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance adopting a substantial amendment to the community development annual action plans for PYFY 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023 for the reprogramming of community development block grant CDBG funds for the construction and related costs for the senior and community center space improvements at the Rosa Hurford Community Center, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Ms. Hayward presented it, this slide, these slides to the council last week. Would you like for her to present them again? All right. Thank you, Counsel. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
I second that.
Thank you. All in favor, yes? All opposed, no? Motion carries five to zero. Let the record show that Councilmember Aberas took a break. Madam Secretary.
Discussion items. DS 23048. Discuss ARPA and PFC grant funding for nonprofits and businesses.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Singh.
Good evening, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
I apologize. Assistant City Manager Singh.
Thank you. I'll get started tonight, and then I'll give it over to Ms. Chizito so that she can finish up with the grants. So at your last council meeting, the council directed that we bring back some pieces of information, specifically asked for updates on the ARPA business and grant funding, but we did go ahead and include the PFC as well because we felt like it was relevant since we've been talking about those all together. So first, to go over the nonprofit grants. As you'll recall, the nonprofit youth organization grant program was allocated $350,000 from the PFC funds. We had three different rounds of funding for that. The first round, nine nonprofits were approved. Round two, 11 nonprofits were approved. And then in round three, seven nonprofits were approved. And so all the awarded funds have been dispersed. And we did fund one additional nonprofit through this, and I'll go into that on the next slide. So for our ARPA nonprofits, these were for regular nonprofit organizations. For round one, we funded six nonprofits. Round two, we actually funded 10 nonprofits, so nine of those were funded from the ARPA funds. And we had one nonprofit that was eligible for both the youth and for the regular. The specific non, ARPA nonprofit did not disqualify youth organizations. So the youth one that was submitted through this was actually funded through, funded through the PFC. If you'll recall, we ran out of funds here, and we still had PFC funds left. And so the council authorized that that actually be funded out of there. And so all of that funding has been dispersed as well. The next part I'll discuss is the business relief grants. If you'll recall, these were essentially, you had to prove that you had a lost revenue based on the pandemic. And so it was just very specific criteria. We had 22 applications that were approved to receive funding in the amount of $187,000. We have dispersed funds for 19 of these applications. And then you'll see here, we have three different ones that are pending. So one has not completed the required paperwork. They're only eligible for $328. We have one applicant who is overseas indefinitely, and then one applicant who has not responded to any correspondence, and we have gone there twice, both when they were closed. Especially in relation to that last one, at some point, if we're able to determine that they permanently closed, they would no longer be eligible. But it would be completely within council's right to set a deadline of if they do not respond by then, that money should not be held for them any longer. And with that, I'm going to invite Ms. Chizito up to continue about the North Colleen... And with that, I'm going to invite Ms. Chizito up to continue about the North Colleen program.
Yes, ma'am. One moment, please. You want to address...
No, no, go ahead.
You want her finished? Okay. Good evening. How are you, Ms. Kate?
As you all know, in July, you approved seven downtown businesses for the ARPA grants, and I won't belabor going through the amounts and who they were given to. But just kind of an update on them, Braids &amp; Browns by Chris, contract signed was August 29, 2022 for $19,781. A change order was issued for this applicant for $617.81, and they held their grand opening in October of 2022, and they've added five jobs to the downtown area. Next up is Space Create, who also signed their contract August 29, 2022, for an amount of $128,578. And they opened their, they had their grand opening in November of 2022, and they've also added five jobs to downtown. Let's Eat Texas signed their contract September 9, 2022, for $89,000. There was a change order issued for $22,180, and they hosted their grand opening in December of 2022, and they added six jobs to their catering staff that was already there. Twice as funny Comedy Lounge signed their contract August 29, 2022, for $306,000. They've had a soft opening, and if you all are available, they're having their grand opening this coming weekend. They've added 30 jobs to downtown. Kinetic Images signed their contract December 5, 2022, for $95,000, and they're hoping to host their grand opening May the 20. Roma Cigar Lounge signed their contract November 9, 2022, for $239,953. They just received their approval from the Heritage Preservation Board for the changes to the exterior of the building in March 30. And actually, if you drive by there now, construction crews are there abating the asbestos, and they're hoping to have the complete renovations done by the end of this year. And finally, Rincon de Panama signed their contract January 27, 2023, for $87,500. A change order was issued for $13,500. She closed on the property in February of 2023, and they're hoping to soon be closed for renovations and is open as quickly as possible afterwards.
And we do have one final summary that shows you kind of the remaining balances of what's still pending, and then that $70,000 from PFC that has not been allocated.
So PFC funds is $70,000.
Yes.
And our ARPA funds is zero.
Yes, with the exception of the pending ones, it's been allocated, but we have not given it away.
Okay, $20,328. Thank you, ma'am. One moment. Councilmember Segura.
Thank you, Mayor. And my question was kind of in line of how much money we had left over. And first of all, I just want to apologize because I know that we've, we've got a lot of great businesses out there that we've given money. But one of the reasons why I said I want to apologize is because I think that one of the main ones that I think should have gotten money, and that's probably more of mine, was overlooked tremendously. And we talk a lot about grocery store downtown, and me and Councilwoman Jessica Gonzalez, and I also invited the President of the Chamber to come down and visit the grocery store that's down there on downtown, right next to the Chamber. And so we met with the owners. They've been here for like 30-plus years. And while we were sitting there, I mean, people were just coming in, and they got a lot of things that are highly needed in our downtown area. And sometimes I think that, you know, we talk about food deserts, and I was reading an article even a couple of weeks ago when they had these campaigns going on, and not one person mentioned that store. I know that they mentioned the Korean store and the, but the guy has done so much for our community here, and it's been a struggle for him. We talk about employees. We asked him, I say, "How many employees do you employ?" He says, "About 20." And "It's hard to hire people," he said. "But I've been here," and he has seven refrigeration systems. And I said, "What is the biggest part that you sell?" And he says, "Frozen meats." And, and so, so the point is, I don't want to do anything now, but I want to see if something can be reserved as we move forward and kind of talk about maybe giving them something, because right now he's got some refrigeration units that are broken down and that he needs to invest money, and he's struggling, just like most grocery stores. That's kind of one of the reasons why they shut down. But they speak Spanish. And so, you know, they're always working. He's got two floors. So they're not aware of this. And here, you know, I probably, one of the ones that should have reached out to him and said, "You need to get some of this money," and he never did. But yet, we talk about a need for a grocery store, and here he is providing that, and yet we've overlooked him, and him and his wife. And so I would just like to put that out there, if the council's being willing, to reserve if we have anything left for them while we bring them forward, have that conversation, make sure that we let them know how to do this process and help them with that, because, I mean, he literally broke down. And so, you know, I've never asked the city for anything, and I've been here for 30 years, and, you know, he helps homeless, he gives food, and I think I'm out of time.
Thank you, sir.
Jessica wants to take over.
Thank you, sir. And that's one, I'm glad you mentioned that, because there are other nonprofits, especially churches, and that's why I want to ask you and the council. It's because he does not have an application on file. And one of the correct, and one of the people that's opened up a nonprofit that is free to help with counseling and daycare and, and just parenting, things that we need, wanted to know, is it was feasible to, to what you opened it up for others, for the remaining funds, I don't know what $20,000 gonna do, to open it up for others to apply if there was any money left? So I just want to throw that in the atmosphere, and the council can talk about that, because the individual that owns that store, I've been in there a couple of times. So, okay. With that being said, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I look at this as a good news story. This is something that is, and it's not giving away money, it's more investing in our community. And you can see from the pictures, the jobs that were created, that this was a success to this date, and I wish them continued success as they continue to generate not only jobs, but interest in our downtown area and just throughout our community. I do look at the, I thank the staff for doing this. I can't overlook you all, because this was tough. This was tough. And actually, you know, you came into this, and it was, it was ongoing, and you were kind of building an airplane while in flight. And so you did a marvelous job of, of, you know, we had some hiccups, but I think we all kind of learned our way through it. And if we should ever decide to go this route again in the future, I think we have a template now to go forward and have, be, be very successful in it. So Assistant City Manager Singh, thank you very much, Ms. Kate, and anyone other, the staff that had played a role in this. I would like to also mention that with that 70, I think we did our due diligence as opening this up, especially for the nonprofit, for the PFC fund, nonprofit. We had this open now two years almost, basically, basically two years, correct?
I'm trying to remember if it's been a year.
Yeah, it's been a while.
It was February. I just, I can't remember if it's been a year. I think, I think it was a year in February.
Okay, so, yeah. It feels longer. But, you know, I think that at this point, we actually had to pull teeth and pull people out of the community to actually, you know, apply for this thing. And to Councilmember Segura's point, getting the word out is kind of difficult. But with that, I think we've done our due diligence on that. With that $70,000, I would, you know, I would like the council to start thinking, is some maybe, maybe grocery store incentives and things like that that we maybe could put through that, or your staff can come up with ideas as well, I'm sure. But I think that's probably exhausted its, its lifetime, its life, its shelf life. And we need to move on and, and put this money to use somewhere else, because no $70,000 just sitting around is not good. We need to be using it somewhere. So with that, again, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for the council for voting yes to this in the first, in the first place. But great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that'd be $90,328. And if we do go this direction, Counsel, I just think that it should be an open application process, because everyone that received funding from us had to go through the process. And I think if it's, I just believe in being fair, and just do it for a short amount of time, maybe two weeks, run it again, and then bring in the applicants, applications, and the council can, can choose from there. But I do also think that we should also, if it's just the fridge that are broken, before we open it up to everyone for that grocery store over there, we should take that and put it aside to take care of the freezers there, and then open it up for two weeks for other individuals that might want to apply for that, whatever left from whatever it takes to fix those fridge. That's just my recommendation. Counsel, you agree? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm in 100% agreement with what you just stated. I think it's important that we work to sustain the existing store that's providing those services to our customers on the north side as much as possible by earmarking a particular amount of money. I'm not sure how much that is right now. But I would like to, that would actually have to require a motion. So I'll go ahead and make a motion of direction. But before I do that, with some clarity from Councilman Segura, what, what were those particular needs from this particular business, the name of the business, et cetera?
Yes, and, and I was going to make a motion that if we can reserve that. And the reason is, I don't, I, you know, he is filling a need that I know this community has been highly talking about, which is grocery store. I mean, he's targeting exactly what we need. He's there. And I would just like to, you know, if you make that motion, just to reserve that $70,000 for him and just help him do that application. And because, because, I mean, if you put it together, I mean, he did the refrigeration, but he went through all that other stuff when we had COVID, and he struggled through that. And so there's a lot more other things that they're on highly need of. And, and I would like, you know, just to reserve it and give the council an opportunity to go out there and, and visit and see what's going on so that we can come back and see if that's something that we'd be willing to do.
And thank you for that response.
Yes, sir. You gonna make a motion, Councilmember Board?
Yes. I make a motion to reserve 20% of the amount left over to go towards the grocery store as opposed to allocating an entire $70,000. I do think it was appropriate, what the mayor mentioned, giving other folks that opportunity and going through the entire process. This, I'm making a motion because this sounds to all of us to be the most pressing need, the freezers. And so I'm not sure what those costs are, but I also don't want us to tie up the entire amount.
We need a second to that motion? Second to the motion?
I second that motion.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Standby. I'm sorry.
Sure.
Oh, yes. Counsel, Counselmember Gonzalez, she wants to make an amendment.
So at this point, I do agree with all that's been said here at this point, and I do agree with Madam Mayor as far as making sure that we at least open up the opportunity. Because we know that there is a need with a grocery store, grocery store that's already existing, and that there is something that could be left over as potential negotiating tool for grocery opportunity, I would just recommend that we, right now, just pause those funds, allocate the $90,328, and put it on reserve for grocery store initiative, and allow us the opportunity to figure out how we could allocate those funds in the future, but specifically for grocery store initiatives.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, and you have to withdraw your second.
I am going to withdraw my second, but I do have something to say about this.
Yes, ma'am. I agree. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Will you repeat your motion? Now, your motion is not an amendment.
Okay, yes, ma'am. So my motion is to take the remaining balance of $90,328 and reserve it for special allocation for grocery store projects. And then that way, this will give the council time to figure out how we open up for opportunities for our current grocery store and any future opportunities for the area providers.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. The motion was to set aside $90,328 to go toward a future grocery store.
Madam Mayor?
Second.
If I might point out one thing before the council votes on that, is there are three, that $20,328, that money is, right now, it's technically allocated towards applicants. So I would recommend that you set a deadline, that if they haven't responded, then at that point, that money could be allocated. But I just want to make sure.
Was it the 300 and...
Let me get to the final.
$20,328. Mayor Protem.
Madam Mayor, I move to amend as such.
As such. Can I get a second to as such, a date?
Second.
A date, a deadline.
Two weeks? Two weeks? Two weeks.
They've had a year. I'm sorry, I just said they've had a year, so two weeks.
Oh, I thought you said a year. Okay, yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks. Ms. Singh, have we reached out to them, and they're out the country, or is it something we're missing?
No, I don't believe so. We've, we've tried multiple times, tried to show up to the businesses. One, I believe, has actually closed, but there's still stuff inside. So we've been there twice, and it has not been open. So I don't expect that these people will come back at this point, but we will reach out to them and let them know that's the deadline, and if we hear anything back.
All right. Counsel, the amendment is to give the individual that was giving the $20,328 one week to respond back, two weeks to respond back to the city. If not, it will be going to the grocery store initiative. All in favor of the amendment, yes. All opposed, no. Oh, I apologize. Stand down. Councilwoman Cobb, they took it off my, see, I just want you to see.
No, we're good.
It's not on there.
That's fine. I'm in favor of the grocery store initiative and projects, but there's one something. Before we decided that we were going to start giving this, opening this money up, we have decided that we're going to work with the grocery store. I had a Spanish organization that contacted me, and we met with Ms. Singh. And because they did not understand why they could not apply, because we had not reached out to their community, and they did not know of these grants, we told them they couldn't apply or do anything. And so now it seems as if we're specifically saying, even though it's a need, and even though I want people eating, before we get that in the newspaper, that we're going to just give the money for a special, the WIC Nutritional Center is what it, what it's called in the grocery store.
It's WIC.
That we're going to just give them money. Well, what about the Spanish group that came, and we've already gave this sermon to everyone that we have no money in the house? So I just want to say, how does that work? We said that we were closed, we had initiated, and all those people that are going to listen is going to hear this tonight, and they're going to say, "Well, we were told that it was closed." Now they pick someone that they want and go, even if it's a need.
Yes, ma'am. And what the motion was going toward grocery stores, and that person can, you're right, it will go, because if Councilmember Segura, friend, they put in for it, we already said that it can only go toward a grocery store. So that is a concern of yours. I do understand. Okay, Counselmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. And I understand what you're saying, Ms. Cobb, but I think that the way I worded it was a special allocation for grocery store projects. So when that opens up, they will have the opportunity now to apply, whereas they didn't before. That's my understanding.
If it is not a grocery store project, if it was simply taking care of women and feeding the hungry, it's not going to go on the grocery store project. We could say future projects, but if we, if we label this grocery store projects, if you're not feeding, or if you're not coming up with a solution for a grocery store, then you get no money. They did not understand either how to feel. They came here and said, "We..." They came here and said we had a language barrier. We met with Ms. Singh, and we had that language barrier. I still didn't know what they were saying in the meeting. We had to even get an interpreter to come in. And I understood that. But to be fair, we have to meet the needs of everyone who didn't understand. If we sit here today and say, hey, I'm just going to give it to this grocery store, I love the store, I love the Cuban sandwiches, I like everything about the grocery store and the gentleman that owns it. And I get it, but the way that we're seeing this right now is if we have went out to the community, we found the business, we got some leftover money, and we're only going to give it to them.
And, and Councilwoman Cobb, that's one reason I see it, we should open it up to the community. But the council has the last say. Your colleagues. And, and, and there's a lot of people that speak Spanish that was not afforded that opportunity. And, but the motion on the floor is that the remaining funding from the ARPA funding and also the nonprofit funding, it will go to the incentive for a grocery store. So you have the option, Councilwoman Cobb, to vote it up or vote it down because we're getting too, I mean, I understand, unless you're going to make an amendment to it, you do have that right. But that's what's on the floor. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
So just to be clear, we're not specific, I did not specify one particular store. And would it make a difference if we said food service projects? I don't, no, not food service, no, because that would open up too far, too broad. Yeah, okay. Please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I was speaking here, and it kind of looks odd because I did make the amendment for it, but I think Councilwoman Cobb does make a very good point. I think she makes a very good point in the sense that if you just open it back up, that's one thing, but if you open it up and then you categorize it down to a specific service or whatnot, I think that that is, is showing somewhat of a, a slant towards that. And I, I think we have to be cautious of doing that in the sense that there, to Council, Councilman Cigaro's point, I too, for the last year and a half or so, have been beating the bushes, getting people to, informing them that they didn't know. They just didn't know. They don't follow things like this. They don't watch our websites. They don't watch our meetings. So they just don't know. So you have to go out and almost be a salesman for this project that we have in the city. And to your credit, that was great work. And I think that what you're talking about is a, is a phenomenal incentive, or a phenomenal initiative. However, to be totally fair in my mind, I think that to open it back up would just be just to open it back up. Let whomever apply, apply. And, you know, if you work with that, if you work with the owners of the grocery store, then I can see that probably if it came back before us, that that would be prioritized as a need, that maybe, at, at least that point, it would be a transparent process, and everybody would have a fair chop at the apple here as opposed to. So I, you know, midway in making my amendment and listening to Ms. Cobb speak, I, 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 I'm going to leave the amendment there and let the council vote the way they, they vote.
This is, this is a new motion, so you have to do a new amendment.
No, no, no. I'm not going to make an amendment. We already have an amendment and a motion on the floor, right?
No, this is a new motion. He withdrew.
Okay, if it's withdrawn, then I, I, I've just stated my point, and I'll leave it there just for something. No, it's not. It's just, it's just me as, listening to wise councilmen and stating my point.
Mayor, if I can, there is an amendment on the floor as well regarding the deadline. So there's the emotion and then the amendment for the deadline for two weeks.
It can be an amendment to an amendment, or you can withdraw your amendment and do another amendment. You have that right.
Madam Mayor, I just, for simplicity, the way we have it on here now, I say we vote the way we vote. But I was just making my point available that I support what Ms. Cobb is saying right now. And so even though I made the amendment, I will not be voting in favor of the amendment or the initiative.
I'm coming to you, Councilwoman Cobb, and that means you have to make an amendment to the amendment. Amendment, yes. Councilmember Alvarez.
I think we may be overcomplicating this. This, this funding was set aside specifically for downtown small businesses, which the, the grocery store you're referring to is a downtown small business. So if we open it up, just like we did the first time, for downtown business owners, he can apply, and whoever Ms. Cobb was talking about can apply, and it'll come back to the council, and we'll look at the, the need versus the ask, and, you know, we'll make a decision and move forward. I don't.
Thank you. The ARPA funding that was set aside for downtown, the remaining, is $20,328. The PFC funding, that's $70,000, was only geared toward youth organization programs. So that money, since we're bringing it all together, which we're making $90,328, if you want to take the $20,328 and just do that for downtown, you can, but that $70,000 is up.
I think we have to be careful. Maybe we should add this before you could, you just reminded me of something. We never made a motion to combine it.
Yes. So, right. Thank you for that. Thank, good catch. The $70,000, as Mayor Protem stated, and the $20,328, it's not combined. We didn't make a motion to combine it. So it's for totally two different reasons. But it's my understanding with the motion, we was going to put it $90,328. Is that your understanding? City Attorney.
My understanding, after the original motion was withdrawn, that a new motion was made to allocate all to grocery, both amounts to the grocery store.
That's what I got.
Project. And then there was an amendment to give a deadline for two weeks for the ARPA funding, the $20,328 to allow that person to do what they want.
I was just saying the $70,000 was not originally set for downtown. So, yeah. All right. With that being said, can we, because I'm going to call for a vote. Mr. Kegel would like to say something.
Oh, it's probably me showing up. I push my button to speak. The only thing I just wanted to remind the council, if we open back up the business program, we had, I can't remember if it was 88 for that particular application, it was over 200 total. And so we constantly receive requests from businesses that are interested in that. So I just want to caution the council with the amount of money left over, there is going to be a huge demand for this, and I, I think that's something that just needs to be considered. And then also, the organization that Ms. Cobb was speaking about was a nonprofit, and so different businesses versus nonprofits. So I just wanted to make sure the council had all that information in making their decision.
Yes, ma'am. But I still agree, I mean, I agree with you, but it should be open up to everyone. Councilmember Alvarez.
Call for the vote.
Can I get a second to call for, Mayor Protem? All in favor to call for the vote? Yes, raise your hand. We can all raise our hand. All in favor to call for the vote? That is six to zero. All right, now we can go back to the motion carries, six to zero. So we'll start with the amendment. Mayor Protem, would you state your amendment to the motion?
My amendment is that the, that given two weeks, the applicant will be allowed to respond. If they don't respond, then we will place the $20,000 into, along with the $70,000 and open.
The $20,328 would go with the $70,000. Yes, sir. All in favor? Yes, all opposed? Oh, motion carries, six to zero. Councilwoman Gonzalez, would you state your original motion?
My original motion was that we allocate, it's going to be hard, but with, I guess with approval of those balances, allocate the $90,328, $328 or the remaining balance and hold for special allocation for grocery store projects.
Thank you. All in favor and for the motion to the amendment? Say yes, all opposed? Oh, wow. Motion carries four to two with Councilmember Cobb and Mayor Protem in opposition. All right, Madam Secretary, next item.
DS 23049, discuss and consider adding the National Day of Prayer to the governing standards and expectations, assistance to community organizations for special events.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, the National Day of Prayer has been held at the city council since 1997. For whatever reason, something happened, and I would like for the council to continue the National Day of Prayer and making it one of the days that we support as a whole. The uniqueness about National Day of Prayer is often, is open to all denominations. We don't have to organize anything. Only thing that they're asking is that they can utilize our facility and have a mic. That is all that they're asking. And I wanted to see if there's something that we can sponsor, but we're not organizing it. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I support this and to the, to the citizen's point about First Amendment rights, I don't know that it's being violated as far as, you know, I guess separation of church and state is what is ma- major concern is. We're, we're supporting an open day of prayer, and if the misnomer is maybe National Day of Prayer as opposed to observation or anything else that we would do, and we do this often in our city. We do, we do recognize different things throughout our city, whether it be, you know, National Hispanic Month, or, or, you know, Black History Month, or whatever the case is. We do recognize central things to what we hold as a community that, that a majority of our people would, would indicate. So with that, I, I'm, I move that we, or is this, do you need a motion of direction for this?
Mm-hmm.
So a motion of direction. I make a motion of direction that we support this and that we approve the, the National Day, that we support the National Day of Prayer to the governing standards and expectation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Board?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion of direction to support the National Day of Prayer in our governor's standards and expectation? Say, oh, yes, all opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Let the record show that Councilmember Cigaro has left the dais. Bless you.
Mayor, if I can ask for clarification? All right, when you, do you want that to come back with that change to your governing standards immediately? Or I would, I would say in June is when we normally bring back the governing standards to look, June, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, City Attorney for that correction. Madam Secretary. Bless you.
Ordinances, OR 23010, consider an ordinance establishing the municipal court as a department of the city and establishing the supervisory authority and responsibilities of the presiding municipal judge. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance establishing the municipal court as a department of the city and establishing the supervisory authority and responsibilities of the presiding municipal judge, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, and providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Meeting Law Code, Government Code 551.001, the mayor now calls a closed meeting of the city council on May, on the name day of May 2023 at 7:24 PM under the following authority. Section 551.074, personnel matter. The city council will discuss duties of the presiding municipal judge. We are now going into closed session. Close meeting at 7:33. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
No, sir. No, sir, no. The motion, the motion on, oh, um, I mean, we're closed, and the time is, I make sure I get the correct time. Oh, I'm sorry, I had to wait a while. I'm sorry, I'm glad you came in. Can I get a motion for OR-22-010? Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve OR 23-010.
Councilwoman Cobb?
I second.
All in favor? Yes, all opposed? Motion carries five to zero with Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Cigaro not present. That goes back to you, Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Cobb, I'm sorry, he hit. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.
I jumped the gun on that.